Right.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Winthrop Town Council meeting for October 29th, 2024. It is currently 6:30. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room. Denise, roll call, please.
Counselor Tassaneri. Counselor Costigan.
Yeah.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DeMarco. Counselor Aiello.
Present.
Counselor Swope.
Here.
Counselor DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Lutiere.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Of my Counselor Aiello. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have two sets of minutes. I thought we had approved October 1st, our last meeting, but just for clarification. So we had minutes from October 1st circulated, as well as minutes from October 15th, 2024 circulated. Do I have a motion to approve both? Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Counselor DeRoz. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions? The ayes have it. General information recommendations. So I just have, I'm going to announce a special council meeting for, I believe it's a Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
October 14th, 2024. The meeting will be held at-
November.
November 14th. You mean.
What did I say?
October.
October, November. All right, let's start again. Going to announce a special council meeting for November 14th, 2024. The meeting will be held at the DeLeo Senior Center. The purpose of the meeting will be discussion and vote on the Winthrop Planning Board recommendation for MBTA 3A zoning community act. The, my understanding is that there is a, there is a meeting that the planning board has posted for October 12th. At that meeting, they are set to make a recommendation. If they do make that recommendation, it will then be in our hands, and I think it is more than deserving of its own special meeting and at a place with a few more people than this. And so that, again, the thought would be to have a discussion and a final vote. There's no questions, I'm sorry, on this right now.
I just wanted to correct the date you said, October.
No, we changed it to November. I did. I apologize for that.
Jim, the time, again?
The time is 6:30, as a regular council meeting would be.
And the planning board meeting?
The planning board meeting is posted for October, November 12th. I'm not sure of the time.
Six o'clock, I think, Jim.
I think it's six, too.
It is six.
Okay, thank you.
And the agenda, just to let everybody know ahead of time, will be a call to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, old business, discuss and vote, Winthrop Planning Board recommendation, public comment adjournment. Counselor Aiello?
Just a note that I am currently scheduled for surgery on the 11th of November, and if it's on Zoom, I may be able to participate.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Oh, no, it won't be the same.
Can we figure out a-
Be on WCAT.
What?
It'll be on WCAT line.
Can we figure out a way to-
He could call in.
He could call in.
You can call in and be on speakerphone for the meeting that way. You can participate that way.
I'll need to do that as well.
Okay.
I'll be away for a while.
That's fine. Um. Yes, for clarification.
November 12th is a planning board?
November 12th is a planning board meeting for them to finalize their recommendation.
Okay.
November 14th is a special meeting for the council to act on their recommendation. In October, uh, Jesus.
November.
November 19th is the regularly scheduled council meeting for November. The first meeting in November, which would have been this coming Tuesday, has been altered because of the election.
Thank you.
How many times I can say October tonight? All right. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is that the town council, which passed on June 21st, 2022, authorized a borrowing in the amount of $1.633,750 for the PRV station project and is hereby amended to increase the authorized borrowing amount of the project to $2.194,250. So this is roughly a $468,000 increase. I am going to open the public hearing. I'm going to ask the Director of DPW to just give a brief overview on the increase, on the reason for the increase.
In the course of the project, after the water tank went through its inspection and prepping to refill, it was determined that there was a breach, or several breaches in the roof. DEP will not allow the tank to be refilled as long as the tank is open to potential contamination from seagulls, animals, you know, any, it has to be a fully sealed structure. This will come forward to make those roof repairs, continue the project, refill the tank, and that's where we are.
And thank you for that, Director. Now I'm going to open it up to the public for people who are in favor of this request to increase the borrowing amount. So anybody who would like to speak in favor of this request, please speak. Yes?
Could you precinct one? I'm in favor of this request so that we can all have
Anyone else in favor? Yes, sir.
I don't understand. I'm just in favor.
Okay, thank you.
We need it. We got to do it.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this request at this public hearing? Anyone on Zoom?
Zoom isn't working very well. I'm having a problem.
All right, I will close that portion of the public hearing, open it up to the council. Any questions regarding this? And I, well, I'll ask Mr. DeRoz first to speak. Counselor DeRoz?
Yeah, we had a finance committee meeting earlier this evening, and Sarah Johnson from the finance team was on, as well as Robbie Powers. We got good news in the sense that out of this $560,000 additional borrowing that is being requested, we did have a Massachusetts Clean Water Trust receiving $400,000 more ARCA funds, to be precise, $475,843, to offset that borrowing. So at the end of the day, when the loan is closed out, the net-net increase here is $84,657.
Just to clarify, we have to authorize the full-
Recommendation from the, from the finance committee.
And for clarification, we have to authorize the full amount of the borrowing. Any other questions? Concerns? Thoughts? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Now we will open up a second public hearing for a petition of the Winthrop Say No to 3A Committee seeking to amend the Town of Winthrop zoning ordinance, section 17, by adding proposed 17.04.060. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask the town manager just to give a brief explanation of where we are with that.
Sure. As the council knows, this petition was submitted by the Winthrop Says No folks, and basically want to change the zoning bylaws that anything moving forward that has to do with MBTA 3A will go to a ballot vote. It would, you know, the council wouldn't vote on it. It would just go to a ballot vote. This is an adding a section to the zoning bylaws, which is why it had to go to the planning board first. Planning board had their hearing, you have their recommendation, and now you're holding your public hearing on it, and then you can vote on this tonight, whether you want to accept the planning board's recommendation. And, you know, I think, believe they voted not to move the petition forward, or you can, you know, make a motion to accept the citizen petition and, you know, not accept the planning board's advice. It's up to the council how they want to vote on it. But this would permanently change the zoning bylaws. If you approve it, then it would have to go up to the, like all zoning judges, go to the AG's office and get approval. If you deny it, then there's other options that the petitioners have, you know, i.e. a supplemental petition that they could file if they would like. But that's your, you know, options for tonight on the citizen's petition.
And just for clarification, I think there are some miscommunication. This is, to accept this petition would require, would take away the council's right to vote on any subsequent 3A discussion, regardless of what it is.
Correct.
This is not just on this one vote potentially coming before us.
Correct.
And you did mention that there is potential, there is relief, I guess, if we reject this, that they can file a supplemental petition.
Correct.
Okay, so it is open. Anyone like to speak in favor of the petition? Yes, sir.
So I understand the petition and-
Just name and precinct.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to find myself. Stephen's only, from 140 Tapas Avenue.
Thank you.
And so I understand the petition. They want to put it to the people, whether to vote, whether they're in favor of 3A and take away from the council.
They're asking to change the zoning so any, if three years from now there was a question on 3A, it would skip the council and go right to a special election. So any, not only the potential vote that we're taking, but any potential votes regarding 3A.
Well, I'm still in favor, and the reason why, my comments can be kind of general, but we talk a lot about democracy these days, and my study of history has never actually been a perfect democracy. The most perfect democracy was in ancient Greece, where they would line up the families, and the head of the family would have a vote, unvote for family. And they could do it in those days because the city-state was so small, they could send out the town crier. Any question of any importance at all, the people got to vote. But it was still a representative democracy, the same as we have today. Today, the representatives of people are supposed to vote the will of the people. The will of people, as I understand, the petition is, what the petition is afraid of is that the will of the people is not going to be voted on. They, and they feel that the people should have the vote to vote themselves. I say that they should. I say if the council is afraid of people voting, then they're afraid of the people's will. They should not be afraid of the people's will. They should let the people speak. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes?
Mark Senet, precinct two. As I understand, the petition was submitted some time ago, and you had 60 days to respond to it. And that 60 days ended on the 18th. And so why is it even discussed right now? Because you, you as a council, missed your deadline. So anybody can speak to that?
Sure. We passed it on. We referred it to the planning board.
You still had only 60 days to respond to it.
That's from now. From the date the council received it, it's, which was 9/4. So 60 days is 11/3, which would be the weekend, so the council's having the meeting before, and they can vote on it before.
I believe you're on.
I, well, that's certainly right, and there's certainly other litigation going on about that, but that's the date, and that's the, that's the actual date that the council received it, and that's the date, that's the 60 days. So that's why they're having the hearing tonight, to answer your question.
No, they received it before that, because they passed it on to-
They passed it on on 9/4, sir. And that was the date the council received it as a whole at a public meeting, and then they passed it on. So you, we can debate this all night, but that'll be arguing. I'm just letting you know. That's why the meeting is being held tonight, within the 60-day limit. Thank you.
Yes.
Diane Sands, precinct five. Couple of questions I just have about the last planning board meeting, where they voted recommendation no, because it was too expensive, I believe that $16,000. And now we're having another planning board meeting to look at the recommendation? I'm not quite sure what that's about.
The, two separate items, Diane. The last planning board meeting, and I don't believe they voted no because of the money.
No, they said it was too expensive.
The last planning board meeting was to discuss the petition. Was there taking up the petition, having a public hearing, and voting on the petitions, voting on a recommendation for the petition. Their scheduled meeting on November 12th is for their recommendation for 3A. To comply with 3A, the town is obligated to comply or not comply by December 31st of this year. So they are making their final recommendation to us on how to comply.
Well, I understood that the last planning board meeting, they said it was too, Mr. Boyes said it was too expensive. I actually asked him.
Oh, I'm not saying he didn't say that. I-
He did. Well, $16,000, I believe Denise said that on the August 20th town council meeting, that it would be $16,000 for a special election or to put it on the November 5th ballot, which is too late now. But she said either way, it was $16,000. I just wanted to bring up that we just bought a new EV Chevy Blazer and put in a new charging station, but $16,000 was too expensive. They were saying to, actually, this was a, you're saying it's a zoning issue. We think it's a voting issue.
Well, the petition specifically says us to change the zoning ordinance, so therefore it would be a zoning thing. And the $16,000, if this went, the vote that would be taken would not be to comply with 3A or not. It has nothing to do with complying with 3A or not. The vote is just to, if the vote went to the public and the public accepted the vote and said yes, that means any future votes on 3A would go to the people. It's not a vote on accepting or rejecting 3A or complying with 3A, I should say.
Correct.
People don't want, that's only initial.
The initial one is yes or no to 3A. Do we agree yes or no with 3A?
This petition that's before us, that was before the, that was before the planning board, is to change the zoning ordinance to circumvent the council from voting on any future items regarding 3A.
That's the second petition, the supplementary.
It's the only petition we have in front of us.
I guess we can talk about that later, but the question I have is really is, when the planning board meets again, I'm not clear what they're meeting on. I guess that's it.
The planning board's been working for the past, you know, six months to a year on making a recommendation to the council. That's what they've been charged with, to make a recommendation to help us comply with 3A. So they have worked with two consultants now. They have done their due diligence. They have came up with a plan that they thought would work. They've sent it to the state. We've heard back from the state, so now they're making their final recommendation.
The government is deciding.
Yes, so they're making their final recommendation for the council to ultimately decide. Jack, so these are, we're still talking about people that are agreeing. Anybody can speak now who's agreeing with this, who wants to support this petition?
Can I talk about the makeup of the planning board? We've talked about the-
No, you could talk about supporting this petition. If it, once that section is closed, I will open it up for anybody who is against this petition.
There've been recently a few votes, like the firehouse vote, to put it on Winthrop 3A or not. And it was overwhelming that, from the voters, that they did not want to put it there. It seems that most of the voters, and the way I've calculated it, is probably 90% of the voters want to have the vote no. Hope the planning board takes that into consideration when they send their recommendation to you guys. And I want you guys, excuse me, the town council, to also take that into consideration, that 90% of the voters, it's an overwhelming majority, want you guys to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the petition? Yes, Cal?
Um, precinct one. I'm voting in, I'd like to say yes. Please vote in favor of the petition so that we can, you know, move to have the zoning changed, so that 3A decisions are part of something that the whole town can be considered for. It affects too much land, too many homes, too many families, and now some of the language that's coming down from the letter from the EOHLC has things like, change the word family, change this other complying terms. I think it's too big. It's too intricate, and I think that the more people that can vote on it, the better it will be. It's just, it's too personal to people's homes and people's livelihoods.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the petition? We will close that section of the meeting. We will open it up. Anybody who is opposed to the petition? Yes?
Cassie Woodhouse, precinct six. So I'm not necessarily opposed to there being a vote on 3A compliance for the specific plan, but the concept of turning over any future 3A decisions to a public vote means that that's going to be 16 grand every time a word needs to be updated. And as you pointed out, there might be little tweaks that need to happen, like with our flood zoning that was just amended. We almost missed a deadline. But they managed to get the special planning meeting to happen and then get the vote to you guys so that those maps could be updated in a timely fashion, and we could not miss that deadline to update our flood maps and keep us in compliance there and make sure people could still have flood insurance. I could see something like that happening with 3A where it's not going to impact us in the slightest, but we are forced to go to a vote like that because of the way that the code has been changed. So I would please ask you to say no to this, not necessarily no to a townwide vote on complying with that proposed plan when that does get finalized, but this specific change is just too broad. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak against the petition? Yes, Marcy?
Hi, Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. Again, I concur with what Kathy just said. I think it sets a bad precedent for the town. I think that if you, if the town is, I think we, you councils are our voice, our vote. I'm not opposed to having the town vote for 3A, vote against 3A, but I am opposed to having the, the town to change the zoning laws. I think it sets a bad precedent. The town could come forth with all sorts of petitions to change our laws. I think we're, I've been trying for years to figure out how our government works. Our government works through the council, through the planning board, and they disseminate the, the will of the people through your council boards and your council people. We as citizens, and I don't, I'm not quite sure 90% people are voting against 3A. I think it's a poorly written law. However, again, I'm going to say this to the town council, if the state holds back monies that we desperately need to fix our infrastructure, we're kicking our developments down the line, three to four to five years. Sorry. But I think that it sets a bad precedent. We could change our laws by petition all the time. And I think we have so much work to do now, moving forward, that we have to keep a solid base. We can vote as a town against 3A, and the voters will have their say. I think changing zoning laws has to go before a council, has to have a lot more thought than this. I know you're, you're just thinking of 3A, the language of 3A, but it could be on anything. It could be on anything with a petition to change our laws. And I think that comes with more discussion than just, okay, let's approve this, and then we'll, you know, we'll do it again sometime. We'll talk about another subject another time. That's my opinion, and just very wary of changing our zoning laws for this specific 3A when we have yet to think about our density, our, you know, our other compliances that we haven't heard back from. I'm waiting to see what the planning board says, and then I'm waiting to see how Milton comes out, and then I'm waiting to see, you know, intelligently how the information that's given to us will vote on. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for not timing me.
Anyone else like to speak against this petition? Yes?
Carl, I'm announced, precinct six. I'm not against voting. I literally, that's why I slid in late. I was voting upstairs and came downstairs. So not against it, but I think the petition, the specific petition, which is essentially just add red tape to any, anything that the town council wants to do. If it, basically if anything would occur in the proposed areas, whenever they are proposed, a vote would have to happen. So it's like, do we want, if we want, like I said a couple of council meetings ago, it would be a situation where if they wanted, if you wanted to move a flower box two feet to the right, we'd have, we'd have to have a city council vote, like townwide vote on that. Do we want that? No, you just, you guys can just say, whatever. Like it's, it's, do we want it or not? Right? That's your guys' jobs, not the town. But it just seems like it would add so much red tape to doing basically anything in those areas, like, you know. It just seems, it seems a little bit too heavy, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against the petition? Yes, last?
Celeste Bear, you had precinct one. I just want to echo what everybody else is saying, right? So from what we think about it, if every single time we wanted to adjust and tweak, and the first rev of everything is usually imperfect, right? So every time we want to identify something that needs to be changed, and it could be universal, we could all be in agreement, but once this gets on the books, it becomes a cumbersome, prohibitive process, and then we're more likely to be stuck with something that's imperfect. So that, for that reason, I'm against it, so.
I didn't say that. I don't want to say, don't quote me.
No, no, I didn't say that you said.
You said everybody wants.
I said others. I choose my words very specifically. Thank you, Diane.
Yes. Anyone else speaking against the petition? Tom?
I know it's not-
Name and precinct.
Oh, Tom DeGerran, precinct three. I know it's not the fashion to speak in favor and in faith of a government these days, but I'm going to do it anyway. I've listened to the planning board. I know some of the people on there and some architects that I engage professionally. They're, they're smart people. They're professional. They're thoughtful. They're meticulous, and that's what they have done presenting this plan that I wish they would present already, because I would like to see it. But I think it will be totally reasonable, and the effect of that plan will have minimal change to the Town of Winthrop. I'm looking forward to that. And I have also faith in the town council as a deliberative body. That is, things don't come up to a deliberative, deliberative body, and a vote is taken immediately. The body discusses it. It goes back and forth, and you come back later, and a townwide vote doesn't do that. It just, it's a, it's one vote. So I want to express that, that faith in, in these parts of our town government. I also want to point out that there's nothing the town can do that can nullify or cancel the 3A that was voted on by the state legislature. So that, that law is going to stay regardless of what the Town of Winthrop does. That law will still be the law of the state of Massachusetts that we can't undo. We can't, I mean, my fantasy is that Winthrop secedes from the union, we declare a no-fly zone, and we have peace and quiet from the airport. I don't think that's going to happen.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking against the petition?
Sorry, I can't speak because I'm not against. Time has passed.
Yes, yes.
Time has passed. For a couple of a comment, so long as you're against, you can still speak, but if you're-
No, we had a portion of the meeting that started-
Sure.
For people to fit, speak in favor.
That's fine. I, listen, whatever happens, happens.
Okay, thank you. Now I will open it up to the council for discussion. Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. I'm fully in support of the people voting on a plan presented to us by the planning board. The vote is to accept the plan that they give us for compliance or not. The vote is not whether we like 3A, whether we think it fits here. That's at a different level than the local government. So I plan to fully support a ballot initiative for their recommendation when we have it. It's premature for that. We don't have their recommendation. We don't have the Milton decision yet, but this petition does not do that. People would not be going to the ballot box to vote on the compliance plan. This is a change to our zoning, and I think valid points have been made about the number of people this impacts, which is why I think it should go to a vote. But this is not the vote that we should be taking to change the zoning ordinance.
Counsel Aiello?
So similar to the Vice President, I went to the planning board meeting, and I was persuaded by their thoughtful discussion that this petition is not in the best interest of the town at this, at this point. But getting to what the Vice President has said, I also believe that once we have a formal plan from the planning board, that we should put that before the voters for a vote. But we should reject what we have before us today.
Counsel DeRoz?
Thank you, Council President. I'll echo the Vice President's comments and Counsel Aiello. I did have an opportunity. I didn't have a chance to attend the planning board's meeting the other night, but I did spend an hour and a half this morning over a couple cups of coffee, watching every minute. And someone earlier did say that they wanted to recognize the expertise and the thoroughness of the planning board. I want to echo that. I just want to echo a couple of the comments. For anyone who didn't have a chance to go to the planning board meeting or watch it on WCAT or YouTube after the fact, I jotted down some quotes from members of the planning board. Chris Boyes, the chair, "This petition intentionally would, would essentially would carve out the treatment of 3A in perpetuity as a town meeting. That's not the form of government that exists in Winthrop. There's a separate path available to put petitions on the ballot. Special elections are costly and time-consuming, especially holding them every time there would be a change to 3A." Everyone believes, this was his comment, everyone believes that 3A is going to a ballot referendum anyway. We're fine with that. I'm fine with that, actually. I would echo the Vice President's- I would echo the vice president's comments. I believe this should go to a popular vote of the town, so when the appropriate time comes, we should do that. We're going to get some pretty critical information coming up here in the month of November. The council president earlier tonight announced the two meetings we have coming up in mid-November, the planning board's meeting on the 12th, then the meeting on the 14th for us to receive their recommendation and vote on it. From everything I'm hearing and reading, including in the Globe as recently as this weekend, we are expecting decisions from the Massachusetts Supreme Court, at least on Milton, I believe on Rockport as well, at some point in the month of November. So, over the next few weeks, we will have a lot of information coming at us about 3A and we'll answer some of the questions rattling around about the constitutionality of the law, questioning as to whether they did the right thing or the legal thing in adding additional funding that were on the hit list, so to speak, that they could cut off if people didn't comply with it. We're going to get a lot of answers and I would echo Vice President Belcher's commentary that this, I would vote against this petition only because I don't believe it's the right, correct, or smart vehicle to do it. Absolutely no offense to folks who wrote it and put in all the effort to write it and put it forth. Thank you for that effort, but this is a no vote for me, but absolutely when the time comes to put the vote before the town with a referendum, I would support that.
Go ahead. No, I defer to you. Counselor Costigan.
Yes, Mr. President. As far as this, this vote, the, I found the, the language quite confusing, to be honest with you, what we were actually voting on. There's been so many meetings. That being said, a lot of good points on the, the no side as well. Depending upon who you listen to and, and what has been said, this issue has divided the town, the inability for people to really voice their opinions in a democracy. And listen, I know that the state has sent this down to us. It's a bad law, I've been saying that all along. I'm for, fully for the exemption, but I have, I, I don't have too much confidence in the exemption at this time anyways, but, but that being the case, this, this vote, I think may help to, to heal both sides with regards to having a vote for what is the best for their community. We're all in this together with regards to, again, I've said that multiple times, but the vote on this tonight, I believe, will take place, should take place. It affects every member of this community. And as we mentioned, I was at the planning board the other night as well. $16,000 per person, I think, is a small price to pay as it relates to our, our input and our, our voices, whether you live at Seal Harbor, whether you live at Governor's Park, and now the issues with the CBD that are going to come up. This is, this, this fight is going to go on for, for quite a while dividing this town. Again, back to the town, back to the state, putting this law upon our lap. We can't forget the fact that we have bylaws in this town which are town laws. Those town laws, providing that they are followed and petitions are given to the people, is a law for this town. So, should we exclude the town law so the state supersedes us? We talk about having to go back to the, the votes of this town every time something comes up on the, on the zoning. What if, what if this passes and all of a sudden they want to spread out the, the zoning for this? I mean, they, they seem to be changing the, in amending this with regards to grant money all the time. So, my fear is that we accept 3A or, or in this case, we, we hold off on the zoning, the zoning goes through, we vote on it with the town. I, I'm in agreement with, with Counselor DeRoz. It's eventually going to come to a vote, but at the same time, this petition filed by, by the, by the no committee should go to a vote for the townspeople who are most affected by this. It is divided. The Seal Harbor people, the Governor's Park, and now the CBD. Some of the zoning language there itself is very concerning to me. And again, this issue will come up with the meetings just mentioned here in, in November, but I would advocate to a yes on this tonight so we can give the people the ability to vote and, again, keep a close eye on this as far as zoning is concerned, to make sure that we, the people of Winthrop, have a vote on this in the event that the state decides to supersede our own town government to change our zoning as we go forward. That is just my opinion. I'm very suspect. I'm still waiting for the letterhead on the county docs. There's some other questionable issues that Ms. Meach pulled up here as well. We don't have a solid plan and there's so, too many loose ends here. I think the power given to the people of Winthrop is we, we as a town, and again, how many times can I say it? I'm doing everything for the betterment of the town here, all of my decisions. And again, I think that this, the town will decide what is best for it. You know, you want to talk grant money? We haven't gotten a dollar in grant money for seven years, we don't have a grant writer. I'm not going to go through that whole litany of yeses and nos and all that good stuff, but again, the people of this town are the ones who are going to be affected by it the most. And I would, I would advocate for a yes vote tonight to put this to the people as it relates to zoning, put this to the people eventually as it relates to a vote on 3A as a whole. This way, at least I know I can put my head on the pillow at night and know that I at least gave the people and democracy a chance in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Counsel President. I believe in democracy too, and I, I appreciate the historical lesson you gave us earlier. There is no perfect democracy to date and we're doing the best we can with our fairly new charter and there is a lot of different ways to get a petition in front of us and to get the people of the Winthrop to be able to vote. Unfortunately, the petition was written in a way where it wasn't a single vote. It's basically forever changing the zoning laws and that was an, a tall request as opposed to just, as Diane had said, a simple vote or as Kathy said during the planning board. I think that had that been written that way, it would have been an overwhelming yes amongst the town council because it's not like we're, we need to make every decision. I think especially something that's so vastly affecting everybody, it would have been nice to just have it that way so that we could support it. In the end, it will come to the people's vote. It will eventually come to that, and that's the way the, the rules are written. Even since the petition wasn't written that way, we'll vote, you guys will have the petition, ability to repeal our decision if we, if you don't like it. And so, in the end, I think it's going to work out exactly the way you want it. You're going to be able to have that ultimate decision, so. It's not too expensive. That's definitely not the reasoning. So, thank you. Counselor Swob.
I've spent some time on the charter for the last month. And as far as I can see, the committee to vote no has followed every single rule in this charter to the letter. If we follow the charter, then people are allowed to vote. And this is not a question of changing zoning. I don't know how this got in here. This is not that. This is for the people to vote on the issue and it could be another issue. I mean, but the charter says that we're allowed to do it. And I think, and I will vote yes tonight, and I do think we should be allowed, the people should be allowed to say it, what, what's on their mind, given that if we're following the charter.
And just, and it's, it was mentioned by somebody in the audience and I think Counselor Munson also mentioned about imperfect and, you know, we have a charter that's, seems new, but it's a little over 20 years old, or 20 years old, but it is definitely imperfect and we try to adjust it every five years as we see fit. However, the charter also gives, understands that and has mechanisms in place. If we were to vote in a way that anyone didn't like, if we voted no and yes wanted it, they could get a, signatures in and we could have an election. If we voted yes and the people wanted no, we could have signatures in and we could have an election. If this petition was to pass or not, I mean, same thing with this petition. If, if we choose to deny this petition, there could be a supplemental petition put in with signatures. Signatures could be verified and that would automatically trigger a vote, townwide vote, no earlier than 30 days, no longer than 120 days if we have another, something else on a ballot. If we don't have any other ballot plans, then it would be within 90 days. And again, if that vote was done and if the town said yes, then that would go to the state. It would have to get approval, it would come back, like the ones we did for the charter, took upwards of four to five to six months. It would come back and then any future discussion on 3A would go to a ballot. 3A is the law. You're not changing 3A. You're never voting up or down on 3A, you're voting up or down. And the, and I, and I do want to, you know, again, thank the planning board. The planning board was tasked with bringing to the council a plan that complies with 3A. They weren't tasked to say no, they were tasked to come up with a plan. It's our job. That's why we were elected, to think if that's the best thing or not for Winthrop. I made my position perfectly clear. But our job is to decide, is their plan, is all their hard work worth? You know, is that a good fit for Winthrop? The risk worth the reward? You know, do you put a round peg into a square hole and just jam it down? Whatever you do, that's our job to decide and, and hopefully we'll be doing that in the not-too-distant future. But I, I would not support this petition. Again, it, it, where, where would it stop after that? Is it, you know, any policy that came before us, somebody could come up with a policy that says, okay, I want to have a petition, we're going to have everything. At that point, and I'm sure I'll get a lot of agreement, at that point, you, what people should do is get a plan together and go back to town meeting, right? And, and, and if that's what people want, then that's, you know, that's the people's choice. That's why it's a democracy. The people can have whatever the people choose to have. This is what we have now. And I think to work within it, you have nine people that ran and put in time and effort and they're, everybody here voted, I assume, for somebody. Maybe they're not people in this room, but they voted and consequences have, elections have consequences, but that's why this checks and balances in the charter. So, the people ultimately do have the final say. So, that's my two cents. I will now close this public hearing and now open up the public comments. So, you're back. Public comment, again, three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, oh, sorry. I know. So, I just have comment.
So, this is public comment. So, this is your comment. Yep. Diane Sands, precinct. Diane Sands, precinct five.
Diane Sands, precinct five. So, the four yes, people, the nine yes, nothing's changed. The other thing I want to comment on, it appears that the town has hired a high-powered attorney. I heard this could be a rumor. Could you comment on that, Mr. Frangello?
I would try to comment if I knew anything about it, but I do not.
I don't know about Mr. Frangello.
I do not.
Frangello?
I do not.
It's a rumor. How do we check on that?
I would call the town manager offline.
Did he hire? Sorry. Can I have?
Did I not answer the question?
You don't know who you hired?
That's what was coming.
Anything else, Diane?
That's it.
That's your comment. Okay. Any other public comment? Yes.
Diana Vianz, precinct two. This isn't a zoning change, everybody knows that already. This is who votes, whether it's the town council or the people. It's happening anyway, no matter how you slice it. If you want to try to slip in your vote before the people, by all means try. As everybody knows now, you've hired a high-priced lawyer to, to try to squash the people's vote. If you had confidence that the people were on your side, would respond to what you were going to vote as a town council, then you would have done that, but here we are. There's three people in this town council that have conflicts of interest, that's Counselor Ayala, Counselor Latiri, and Mr. Tassnari, who is not here because he's already recused himself as a result of his conflict of interest. What else? What else? I think that's it. I think that's it.
Very good. Next, any public comment?
Me.
Yes, Marcy.
So, Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. Thank you for understanding the confusion that's kind of, I've heard a lot of confusing facts here that I'm going to have to get to the bottom of. And I hope that we can get to the bottom of vote for 3A from the town. I hope that the planning board comes back with a well-written, and I'm sure they have because I've listened to some of all their, I haven't listened to the last one, but I'm sure that the planning board will come back with an informed and, and thoughtful plan. And I'm appreciative of both sides of this argument and I understand the law is the law. And I hope that more people who are listening and voting get informed and wait for the results from other, again, other actions that are being taken across the state. And as we move forward, we come together in a thoughtful way and respect everybody's opinions and, and we will get to, we will get to the finish line on 3A and then we will keep moving forward with the most important things that are happening in our community, a fire station, a debt exclusion for infrastructure if we don't get grants and funds for our, our impacted neighborhoods, and a school, two and a half over ride, because those are really things that are impacting us right now and we need to keep moving forward with important issues that are happening at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Yes, Celeste.
Celeste Bearhew at precinct one. So, just to clarify, right, there's, there's two different votes. Petition puts forward, the, the sentiment that all votes on 3A zoning going forward should be undertaken by the people, solely by the people. I think alternate endorsement we're hearing from counselors is we think that people should be able to vote on the proposed plan set forth by the planning board. I have a question, I don't know if you're able to answer it or I'll just throw it out there into the universe. Should we, this petition doesn't go forward, we go to just a referendum vote on approval or, you know, disapproval of the plan set forth by the planning board, do we re-spin it and go back to the planning board to say you need to refine this and re-present it to the town and we continue in this circle? I'm just curious.
If, something like that would not go to the planning board, it would just be a council decision.
Say it again.
Something, if I understand what you're saying, you're basically saying if you were to circumvent, everything go into the, and just add, everything on 3A go into the town and just ask for a vote to go to the town.
If, if we don't go with the petition path and we just go to the referendum on.
I think that's the council's, the council, that, that would not need to go to the planning board, that would be a council decision, my understanding.
Right. But so, if, okay, so if the people.
If, if the, if the council, just to clarify, if the council chose to pass the vote on to the people, the council can do that.
Right.
It would still have to vote on a plan. I mean, you couldn't vote on up or down on 3A because again, 3A is a law, you're not voting down the law, you're voting on a plan. That's why as of right this day, we do not have a plan to vote on.
My question is, if people, if it goes to a referendum vote on the plan and people vote down the plan, then what, we come up with?
It's the same thing. If we, if we, you know, if the council votes on the plan on November, November 14th and said no, and anybody who really wanted 3A could have a petition, bring it in, get signatures, and then we would have X amount of days to put it on a ballot to vote. And the same thing if we voted yes, the no people could do the same thing. So, eventually, and I think Mr. Munson was pretty succinct in this, and eventually it will, it could potentially go to a vote, no matter what the council does.
Okay.
Eventually, it would all be about the same time period.
I don't think we're talking about the same thing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm going to someplace else on the comment period. Only you can have a discussion during the comment period, Tim.
You're out of order, Jack.
We don't have that option.
So, I guess I'm just trying to.
You're out of order, Jack.
Only you can have a discussion during the comment period.
I guess we're just trying to clarify what the question is.
You're supposed to be doing it. You said it a hundred times.
You're out of order, Jack.
Thank you.
Cassie Whitehouse, precinct six. I know what she's trying to say.
Okay.
If the decision from a vote is no, we don't agree with this plan, what happens next?
If the council votes no.
What plan do we present?
Another discussion's happening next.
We're clarifying what the question is.
This is a comment period. Comment and then go home.
Jack, you're out of order. Would you like to?
No, no, you are. You're out of order.
Okay. Well, I'm not leaving. If you'd like to leave, you, you're more than welcome.
If, if the citizens of our community vote no on the proposed compliance plan.
Through a town vote.
And then, yes, through a town vote, and then we are not in compliance. And then, yes, through a town vote, and then we are not in compliance, right, with three A at that point in time, do we continue trying to comply with three A, or do we just sit and we are no longer in compliance and that's the end, or we're not in compliance and that's the end of it? What happens if the group votes no? We are out of compliance with the state law?
I don't know. It's going all over the place now, so I don't know if you meant if the council votes first and then you vote or not. So.
She's asking if the public.
Voted instead of the council.
Yeah.
When the public gets the vote, they said, we don't like the plan.
I mean, to honestly, I don't know.
I mean, I think that's, we just have to think about the future.
It's irregardless of whether we vote or you guys vote. If you don't. Karen.
Karen Travis, precinct two. I have not said one word about three A in all this discussion. I am one hundred percent against three A, but I'm also one hundred percent against this petition. The reason being that this petition says that if one little word, if it's an and, a but, or an or is changed, it has to go out to a vote. That is not right. I know what happens when it goes out to a vote. I've been doing this since the nineteenth of October, and I can tell you, it's not pleasant. Where the sixteen, what is this sixteen thousand? I don't know where that's coming from.
I think that's.
Sixteen thousand what?
For a special election.
Well, you know what? It costs a hell of a lot more than that, I'm going to tell you. And I think Denise will tell you the same thing. And it's a lot more manpower hours, too. I respect every single person on this no for three A. I do. And I know what they're trying to do, but I don't like this, and the reason I don't like it is because of that word, it has to go to a ballot. I don't believe that that should be a part of it. I believe that the town, the voters in this town have every right to vote yes or no on three A, but not on this, because I don't think they all will one hundred percent understand what this is. I've been on two audit review committees now, and it's not a picnic, believe me, and it takes forever to get an ordinance changed. And it takes even longer to get something changed in the charter. We know that. How aren't it go to the state house before we get some charter changes? So again, again, and please, Diane, I, I respect every one of you. I just don't like that word, that it has to go to a ballot.
May I respond? May I respond to that?
Nope.
May I respond?
Public comment.
I wrote it.
Public comment, please.
I wrote it.
Public comment.
Can I please respond to the question?
No. Public comment, yes.
That is it. That's a misintention.
I still want to go back to, if the vote, if the plan is rejected, as being proposed by the, by the planning board, that a consultant has worked on, worked on, do they have to go back and find other areas to zone? And how long can we keep doing this? How much money can we keep spending on this? And can we do this until the cows come home and the law is the law and it does not matter at the state house?
I will find out.
I don't think we've been thinking of that, and we're just going to keep spinning our wheels here and we're breaking the law, basically, and we're going, and it's us, it's no gain.
Other comments.
Are you saying Jack?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Jack Dollar, precinct one. And my thoughts go back to how we got here tonight. I went to a meeting last night with the climate group. It was an informative meeting, but during the middle of the meeting, and I don't know who the chair is, I don't want an answer to that, because I looked up the group and they didn't list a chair. But Norman Hyatt started the, and I don't want to clarify Jim, anything, because it's a comment. Want to clarify something, clarify the chicken broth. I want everybody to know that Norman Hyatt, during the middle of this climate meeting, said that if we don't vote yes for this three A issue, then we're going to lose a lot of funding. So he put politics right in the middle of the group trying to help Bank Street and Board Street. I don't know what his, I know what his motivations are, obviously. He joined the committee to have his say about voting yes. The other thing I want to mention is the planning board, and there's many complimentary comments on the planning board. I did a little bit of research, and at this time, I think there's five members of the planning board, and they were appointed by, I don't want to ask a question, they were appointed by the town itself and others. I think all of them are architects. So it seems like we're going against a stacked deck when we have the planning board making decisions. Architects are in line for money if there's a buildout of eight hundred and eighty-two units, or whatever number of units you want to take. Sometimes people hire architects for that reason, to design buildouts. So they're just waiting in line for their payday. So the deck has been stacked against the people that want to vote no by the planning board, and that's why we, the end was vote from them to go forward. Their recommendation to you is just waiting for a paycheck. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And then.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I understood you correctly, and I understood the other people on the board, it's absolutely certain that the charter says the council is supposed to vote in favor of this petition. They don't have any choice. If I understood you correctly, you're agreeing with that, but you're saying because the people can appeal, we should ignore what the charter says, and let the people appeal. If I understood correctly, and if I'm not, please correct me, because I don't want to be misstating people's positions. That's my state of mind, that's the way I heard it. If that's the position, I'd be very against it. I have to say this. You know, one time in my life, I practiced law, I was before judges and before administrators, I used to hate that because that's what they do. A law would say something, they'd say what the heck. They'd do what they thought they wanted to do, what they thought was right, or maybe they were taking care of a pal, whatever, but hey, you don't like it, go appeal it. Now, this might not be an expensive appeal, like if you have to go to SJC, but still, people are going to have to go through some changes to get what they shouldn't have to go through. If the law says, but look what I think it says, that the charter is absolutely clear, the people have the right to put this petition, and you have to let them vote on it, then you should do it, and let the chips follow them. Thank you very much.
Yes.
So to clarify.
Name and precinct.
Diana Vian, precinct two. This isn't every little thing. This is, it says approval of a final proposal. The people don't have the expertise that the planning board has on zoning. That's why this isn't a zoning ordinance. That's why we're not saying you can park over there but not over here, or residential A is not residential B. This is who has the final say. So once the planning board, or even the town council, because I'm actually not versed in the, in the town council's role in deciding what zoning should be, but say the town council does have a role, that isn't disrupted by this, it's just who has the final say. So once there is a plan to comply on the table, this petition says that decision goes to the people at the ballot, because that's, that's the mechanism we have. You have a different mechanism, if it's like an online survey, like, we don't care. At the end of the day, everyone in this town should have a vote, because as Councilor Coskin pointed out, this affects everybody in a very profound way. And that's all it is. And we're not looking to, like, reinvent the wheel here. We're looking to have the final say on something that impacts the entire town, which is proper and appropriate in this case. And we, we follow the charter, we put a petition forward to do just that, we didn't choose referendum, we chose initiative petition, as is our right. We are one of twenty-six states in the nation that has that option. And we chose it. We followed the law. Two eighteen, by the letter, to the point of Kathleen and I certified mail to ourselves mail, because we were one of the top five people on the petition committee list. Like, I got certified mail to myself, okay? That's how, that's how strict we were about it, okay? We followed the charter because that's what, that is our local law. And if you're telling people that our charter doesn't mean shit, that they have no power to legislate directly as citizens through this process, then you are essentially throwing out a very core piece of our democracy. So I don't think you want to do that. I don't think you want to send a signal out to the rest of the one seventy-seven that that's acceptable, but I guess maybe you already did, doesn't matter, because it's going to supplement our petition, maybe we're all ready on appeal. It's chaos, but I know that we have solidly followed the rules and that, and that we are just following the bouncing ball at this point, and that the judge will decide because it isn't, it isn't Superior Court, if that isn't what's happened here. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Tom.
Tom Derrin, precinct three. Did I understand, Hannah Delcha, saying that the planning board would present a plan to the town council, and the town council would vote on that plan to send it to the state? Now, thereafter, the town could have a townwide vote on that, or not? After that, if the town votes against the planning board's plan, then does the planning board have to come up with another plan to comply with three A, or have we decided that we will just never comply with three A and suffer whatever consequences thereof? Do I understand that correctly?
No. Not exactly. Beating a dead horse here. I can't answer the question right now.
Thank you.
Yes. Name and precinct again.
Oh, sorry. Carol Arthur, precinct six. I agree with, my biggest question, this is completely unrelated, just because it's on the thing, I hope it can be done for, for future elections. When you guys advertise where elections are going to be held, for general elections, it says Old Middle School Gym. It'd be great to advertise things, because one of them says Old Middle School Gym, why it says Golden Drive? It would be great just to put the addresses of everything, instead of just saying what is a place, because I don't know what these places are. Like, it's, it's weird. If it's a, if it's a new kid who's never been to that school, their, their first time voting, they might not know what that is. It's getting to an age where maybe people might want to know. I know this has nothing to do with this conversation, but just something that I, I see all the time, and I just, it's something that I hope could be changed for future elections.
Thank you.
Put the address.
No questions.
Good point. All right. Public comment is closed. Correspondence, Denise.
Let's see, we have Diane Sands. You discussed the Winter Planning Board vote on the petition, the estimated cost of special election quota, which we have already reviewed. Julia Wallace is not opposed to having a public election to vote on three A zoning compliance plan, but feels it's premature to amend a zoning ordinance by way of this petition. And that is it for now.
Finance Committee. Councilor DeRoz.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, we had two motions put forth by the town manager that we discussed in Finance Committee earlier tonight. We made positive recommendations for both. Council President, would you like me to read those, or will we?
We'll go over those and.
Go over those. Yeah, we discussed both of them, and we had the benefit of having Sarah Johnson, Robbie Powers from our finance team, as well as Director Calla here to help us with those.
And you did have positive recommendation for both.
Positive recommendation on both motions, yes.
Thank you. Public works.
We met on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, to discuss the release and abandonment of a certain right-of-way at Seventy-Six Summit, and we kind of touched on thinking about the criteria that we need to determine whether to abandon walkways across the entire city. And that's, a town, I'm sorry, and that's, we didn't get very far on that. But we did discuss Seventy-Six Summit F. The, the abutters, two of the abutters, not four, we discussed this with two of the abutters that were there. They want, they claim that there have been lots of drug problems there, as well as the increased parking prevents them from ever parking, sometimes even near their house, because there's many more tickets given. So I did examine that, and I did talk about that there. I did go to the police to find out whether there's been an increase in parking tickets, and there has been an increase in parking tickets on all the street from, from those that go from Summit all the way down to Crest Avenue. All those streets have increased parking. And interestingly enough, just as an aside, when I looked at that, looked at Summit, when I walked it, there are additional apartment buildings at the end of that block, and I don't know how many changes there have been from single-family homes to multifamily homes, but this is a problem across town, and I have a feeling we've given variances where, I'm not sure we should do that, we're having trouble parking. Anyway, so that was one of the things that came up in their, in their petition. The other was their concern about needles and drugs being used on that walkway. So I asked the police to give me a report on that. They, in the last five years, they have not, they don't have, they can't find anything in their records. So I asked the abutters to go back and tell me if they have video, if they have claims that they gave to the police, whatever they did, to ensure that I was getting accurate information to make a decision on that. I also asked Attorney Cipolla to tell me what it would take to turn over that right-of-way, what legal measures we have to take to do something like that. So Max and Tassanari and they were there, and we voted, so I asked them, ahead of my son, I asked them, the abutters, to give me the information about any drug use or anything that they had, because that would, that's the claim that they made and the reason that they wanted it. They also want to put a driveway in there. So I can appreciate that because of the parking problem. So there was, there's a concern. They, we had to postpone that because of sadly a death in the family, so we're not talking about that tonight, but we'll be bringing this up on December third. In the meantime, I've gotten about fourteen emails about how terrible it would be to give up a walkway. In addition to that, I did talk with the town, with DPW, and Steve was kind enough to give me a list of the walkways, a list of the waterways, and his just best guesses of what it would cost. The one that we're talking about, the one that goes from Summit to Crest, is Steve's calculation, if we did that whole thing, it would be like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair it. There are three walkways like that that are very expensive. The rest of them just need pruning, trimming, some cement work, they're not as big. So here's where we stand on sixty-seven. We're, we haven't talked to two abutters, so I don't even know if they would approve it. We don't have the variances, they don't have the variances that they can get it, but we did ask that to go forward, and so we're in more discussion about that. And until I have, I think, more evidence on what I thought was their major concern, I think we'll just have to discuss this on December third. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, School Department report. The School Department did meet last Monday. It was a very brief meeting, and the major topic on the meeting was the first day that school would be closed on next Tuesday, on Election Day. School would be closed for the children, the teachers have professional development, and the other discussion was on the override, right, and the consequences of, you know, already discussing the potential consequences of a no vote and the actions that would be taken by the superintendent and how they would discuss those and talked about potential class sizes and such. No definitive, obviously, nothing definitive, but just discussing the need and the urgency for the override. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. We had a meeting with Director Calla and I with National Grid. They've got a program out there, kind of dovetailing on probably what the mothers out front talked about at the Climate Commission last night. They're trying to do a pilot program with regard to abandoning gas mains on certain streets and electrifying them. Certainly, the cost to increase, you know, the increased cost to replace gas mains, and then the, you know, the decarbonation movement that's, you know, come forward to, you know, try to decarbonize and reduce our carbon footprint by twenty fifty or twenty forty-five, whatever the date is, but they're moving forward with this program, and they're trying to get, they've got a few streets identified where they're going to reach out to the residents, and they'd like to try a few pilot streets. They're going to try to get a consensus. I mean, it would need all of the owners to, you know, comply, and, you know, they have money available to help electrify the homes if they would have been in the. abandoned the gas services, but that's something they're looking at. Certainly, they'd send out letters and see if the neighbors are interested. But the benefit would be they would not have to replace the gas main, they'd abandon it and then the homes there would, you know, electrify versus, you know, heat pumps or geothermal or whatever they chose to do. But there'd be monies available made available by National Grid to help them make that switch. They would need to get, you know, most of the residents, if not all, you know, if somebody's got oil, obviously they wouldn't be eligible, but if they've got gas, they would be. So they're moving forward with that on a few pilot streets. Maybe there'll be a larger program down the road, but that is something they're looking at and I know it's come up in the Climate Commission, so. Euro Beach update, we did have a meeting with the residents out of Point Shirley with regard to Euro Beach and the beach management plan. It was well-attended. Had a good debate about it, talked about next steps. We are going to be shortly signing with the administrative consent order, an ACO, with the DEP to enforce, you know, to implement the beach management plan. As I explained at that meeting, there is a benefit to the ACO. It allows us to work directly with DEP for the next five years to get this work done, not having to go out to any other committees, whether it's Army Corps or anybody else, we can deal directly with DEP. It does involve putting a coastal dune in up along the seawall, which we'll look to start and, you know, get pricing for in the springtime. And then the reason we wait till the spring is because we don't want to put it in now, have the material that we size out, put up against the wall and have it wash away in the wintertime because you want to be able to plant it. By having the plantings there, it's got a better chance of surviving the storms. And if we do it in the springtime, it'll have the whole entire spring season and summer season and fall to take and then be ready for the following winter, so. More to come on that. We'll certainly have updated meetings with the, the neighbors. We did stress to the neighbors, our primary concern is certainly the protection of their homes. There will be some reduction in the number of staircases that are out there. There'll be what they call moby mats, new staircases put in, moby mats put out, you know, to the beach area. And then part of this is also, you know, cleaning up some of the beach, as part of the beach management plan where we can, that's not in the coastal dune. So, you know, more to follow on that. Once we get the finalized beach management plan, I will ask the consultant to come in and present it to the council as well, but I wanted to just give an update on how that meeting went. We are still acquiring the sandbags for Morton Banks. We do want to have another meeting with the homeowners down there, the, you know, specifically the eight that are impacted. We want to see what they want and need for sandbags. We've talked about sandbagging their homes and, you know, how, how that works for them. Obviously, they know what the floodwaters do and where the water goes, so we want to make sure that they're on board. And then we'll put an effort together, hopefully on a weekend, we'll try to get some volunteers and have the sandbags delivered and assist the homeowners to, you know, sandbag the homes. That's something we'll do, probably right after Veterans Day, sometime in November. We did, I did finish conducting the interviews for the ATM. We have somebody selected, we're still negotiating a offer letter and then see if they accept. So I don't want to mention any names, but I should have a name ready for the next meeting. That, those went well. We had really three good finalists, great finalists actually to pick from, so it was nice to have those options and I think we picked the right candidate. Not a lot of people probably know about it or talk about it, especially in this council, but we do have a regional dispatch, right? We team up with Revere and we have a regional dispatch center. Part of that agreement with Revere and with the council signed off on years ago, probably, you know, 15, 20 years ago now, is to add a, eventually add a third community. When we add a third community, we become a tier one dispatch center and allows us to go get additional grant monies. We get up, moved up to the list for more monies for communication equipment, capital upgrades, things like that. We have a third community we've been talking to in mind. We're getting to the end there. It will have to come to the council for approval, but, you know, obviously benefit will be the third community will mean reduced costs for Winter, access to additional funds. And eventually, the 911 money we're applying for through the REC is to do over, a building in Revere, right now is housing the police station, which they've sort of outgrown. So Revere's looking to do over the McKinley School, an old abandoned building in Revere. Part of it will be for children's daycare, I believe, is what they're going to lease it for. The other half will be leased to the REC and we'll be able to remodel it to our specifications, the REC specifications and have a top-notch, state-of-the-art dispatch center, which will be paid for, you know, by grant money through the state 911 grant. We, you know, and as far as funding source goes, we all pay a surcharge on our cell phone bills that ends up funding those. That's where those funds come from, you know, through the state, so. You know, it's a great news because we've been really, over the years, when I got here, there was, you know, at one point they were trying to get Sawagus to come onboard, that didn't work out. Several attempts to get Chelsea, you know, we're in the final mix now to hopefully get Chelsea again and then, you know, we'll be forward. That will make us one of the largest regional dispatch centers around with call volume, you know, having Revere, Chelsea and Winter. So, good news on that front. I will certainly be back with a plan with the REC to, you know, what that means for Winter and what the council would need to do as the next steps. And we also yesterday had our next meeting with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the revised plan. Our plan has since been outdated. We need to update it. After this meeting, we, you know, reviewed all the options, reviewed what we needed to change. And then we're going to have some public meetings in early New Year, right before January, we'll have some public meetings to go over the plan, explain it, get input from the community. We'll certainly advertise those meetings. And then we're habituated to have that Hazard Mitigation Plan done by June 2025. And then probably come in and present that to the council as well. And with that, I will certainly answer any questions the council members may have.
All right, just a couple of things and then I'll pass it on. So my understanding is we have continuing engineering on Tileston and Girdlestone?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, with the additional money that the council put forward, yeah.
My understanding is we have a bid in for engineering on Morton Street? Accurate or?
We're finalizing numbers. Did we get it in?
We did just receive the hazard.
Okay. You have more intel than I do.
So we'll have more info on that. And also if, you know, I noticed today and if people are wondering on Revere and Crest, the section that has already been paved, you'll see a slit in the section. Now that was planned. National Grid wasn't responsible to pave all the way up, but they did as part of the project with no additional cost. That's drainage as part of, my understanding, and Steve could correct me if I'm wrong, but that's drainage work done and part of the tips project. And that, that section of the road is going to be reclaimed and repaved. So I don't want anybody to think we paved it and then cut it up immediately, not knowing something. So that was part of the original plan. We were just fortunate to have National Grid do the extra paving all the way up to the So that was that, Engineering Tips Project. And, all right, open it up for questions. Councilors, what?
I have about three or four.
Okay.
On the walkways and pathways, I know that Steve has given us a rough estimate. I'm wondering if you could help us a bit on that? I know it's costly, but taken, it would be better to take these as a whole and see what we can do with them and see if we can't improve them with lighting and, you know, and maintain them. And I think that's probably the, what we're going to hear from most of the town, that they'd like to keep them. I understand that costs may be prohibitive on some, and if it is, then maybe we can't do it, but, or maybe we can delay it, or maybe we have to close them off because they are a hazard. I don't want anybody to get hurt on walkways, of course, and you don't either. So if you could give me some idea, I can talk to you later about that too. Also, Councilor Allo mentioned that he wasn't sure, but I, but he, I would like to know too, if indeed we have sold off public walkways, particularly on Veterans Road to the beach at any point in time. Did, did the council, did, did the council ever ask for, I'm sorry. Sorry. Did the council ever, in previous times, sell walkways that were public to private citizens? Do you, do you recall that in any, at any time?
I know on River Road, there was access behind the houses that people had, you know, that was private property that was, that they took over, that was town property they took over and they bought that property, right? Because there was areas that were already fenced in, there was areas with pools on it, whatever, that technically was town land. That was then offered at that point to them and they paid for that.
Can we, can I get a record of what we, what they paid? Is there a record somewhere?
I don't know how many years ago, 10, 15 years ago. I'm sure there's a record of the sale of land.
Okay.
You can't talk right now.
I just wanted to mention another area, that's all.
Yeah, but you can't, I'm sorry.
Later, I'll talk to you after. Okay. The second is, I went to both zoning and planning and I was, maybe, I was kind of surprised when I heard from the Chair of the Zoning Committee that they take every project as it comes. That's, the project that's in front of them is what they are talking about. They're, they don't have a bigger picture and they don't, they don't, they just talk about that project. And so I asked, well, does the planning committee have a kind of a scope of this in terms of what we're doing in variances in particular? No, they, he thought that they also take projects individually. Given the problems that we're having because of variances, I think, I think, really, can we have a, a meeting, I've asked this before, and I would really like Planning, Zoning, DPW and the Town Council to just sit down and have a discussion about these variances. Jim, I don't think we can afford to continue to give away parking. You know, it's just not going to work. And we can't buy, we, you shouldn't be able to buy it out. And secondly, when I looked at the plans on Somerset, I thought we had, in our zoning laws, I thought we had a, a space decision. In other words, one, one unit is 700 square feet, two bedrooms are 900 square feet. And, and these plans, I see units that are 500 plus, 600 plus. And so are those also variances? And the only person on the zoning board that brought this up, because I, I mentioned, is Champlain and I, is that how you say his name? Champlain, sorry. And I, and I, so I do think that we're kind of missing the boat here in terms of if we can get to an overall plan. And finally, there is a, I'm sure there's a cost to 3A. I'm not sure that we've analyzed it. Actually, Councilor Allo asked about this early on. Could we have a financial plan as to what it would cost us, whatever plan we decide to do? I would like a financial analysis on the, whatever plan is proposed, because there is a big cost to this. And I, I think we should at least estimate it. Tony, see what you can do on that, if you would. Thank you, sir.
I'll bring an estimate back for the council to look at.
Thank you.
Let your eyes, if you have your hand up.
Yeah, just a quick question, Tony, on one thing you said, and then I'll mention one quick thing about the, thank you, by the way, about the Climate Commission last night. Hazard plan. I know when we met last night as the Climate Commission, we were saying how important it is to qualify for any state or federal money that in most cases, they're going to require us to provide that update. I just have a question about the timeline you said. So it sounds like the update itself is almost finished. And then I think you gave a June 2025 timeline for when we would need to approve that as a council? Is that correct?
Hazard mitigation plan, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get that in front, yeah.
Okay. So that would be the earliest timeframe probably before we would have an approved, updated?
Yes, for June, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's got to go through the process and.
Is there any way to speed that up at all or is that a locked in?
It's sort of locked in with the consultant that we're using, so, yeah.
Okay. That's an important takeaway, I think, for everybody because, and we're certainly learning as we go, but for folks who may not know, if we want to apply for state level funding such as CZMs and MVPs that we have been applying for, as well as the big money that comes from the feds, from FEMA, et cetera, we're being told that that hazard mitigation plan is really table stakes, you know, in order for us to qualify, we must get that done. So we just need to take that into consideration when we're planning out. And, and this is the comment I'll make, by the way, if anyone hasn't had a chance to attend, I wanted to thank Jack Dowd and several members of Mothers Out Front who attended last night's Climate Commission meeting. Put this date on your calendar. The next meeting is Monday, November 25th, 6:00 PM here at the Hard Room. We are hoping by that point, we're going to turn what we've started to create, and Councilor Costigan is on the commission with me. We have started to create what we're calling a tracker, basically taking into one place, one repository, all of the needs of the town when it comes to climate resiliency, mitigation. You've heard us talk about Morton Street, Pico, Tileston, Girdlestone, et cetera. We're turning that into a presentation that we're hoping to present that night. So it would be a good opportunity to kind of take a total picture of, of all the issues we're trying to solve for, from a flooding perspective, climate perspective. And we're starting to chunk out what the possible solutions are, as well as the funding sources and the timeframe. So we're still in the works creating that. As soon as that's finished, we'll be sure to publish it. If you haven't had a chance to see it, on our town website, there is a page that was created for the Climate Commission. A lot of good resources that are being posted to that. Town Manager Moreno mentioned last night Christine Kinsey, who chairs Mothers Out Front, did a presentation on the possibility of Winter participating in a pilot to look at converting our natural gas pipelines to a geothermal network, to geothermal. There are pilots going on in Framingham and Lowell to this effect right now. So there's all of those types of potential solutions going on. Glad to hear the National Grid actually is approaching us for possible conversion of natural gas to electrification as well. So good opportunity, November 25th. I realize that's the week of Thanksgiving, so folks may have travel plans or not be available, but we will post that PowerPoint presentation after that meeting as well.
Please do.
Realize it's a working document. There's, there, a lot of the cost estimates that we're going to be generating are probably directional at best. Morton Street and Bank Street are probably the most crystallized because if anyone has seen Connor's presentation from Woods Hole, it's very well thought out. And I'll be approaching you, Council President, in terms of putting on the agenda at a future meeting, an opportunity for Connor and Woods Hole to come and present that Morton Street, Bank Street mitigation plan to the entire council. They just, they presented it at our prior Climate Commission meeting, but that will go, I think that actually sets a model for the kind of well-researched solution proposal that we're looking for, for all of the parts of town that are impacted by climate. Thank you.
Counselor.
Just a comment to his, the MMA, the geothermal, there's a really good presentation event on geothermal, so you might want to see.
Counselor Allo.
Just a few things. Good news on the National Grid. Question, was there solar opportunities?
Yes, all sort of electrification, yeah.
That's great. Just a couple of things, I attended the Climate Commission, you know, Tom was there representing you and, and just great work that everybody's doing. I saw the tracker tool draft. I think that's going to provide a lot of value to everybody. But within the discussion, I heard, and maybe one of the folks on the Climate Commission can do it, there's a perception that the report that the Woods Hole Group did about Morton Street with the various alternatives of how to control for flooding, short, medium and long term, because there are a number of options, that it would help our cause downstream if the town formally accepted the prioritization of, of the alternatives that are in that report. So I just want to flag it for you, I, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure which version you saw, but they were already, that vetting process has already been done. They determined that the earth burn was the one and that there, as I talked about before at the last meeting, when we had the form, they, when we had the meeting with the EEA, they, the original plan had those four or five options. Then we vetted it down to the earth burn being the most, made the most sense. They didn't consider that alternate, you know, they only considered the initial submission with all the alternates. And that's why they said they didn't approve us for the MVP grant.
But do we need to formally endorse that or not? That was a discussion yesterday about whether.
No, no, on the grant applications, not normally. I mean, we move forward with that. I mean, that's the, you know, the, you know, the other ones were raising the street and creating, well, I mean, it just didn't, you know, the other options were, while we had to vet them, didn't make a lot of sense, you know.
There was a perception that Revere, the City of Boston formally adopted the, through their councils.
I'll double check, but I, yeah.
Yeah, that was just a small demonstration.
I mean, certainly have chronic come in and present the work, but we did, they did fine tune down to the, the final earth burn being the best solution, so.
Yeah, no, that's right. The question is whether or not there needs to be formal adoption by the council, something like that.
But we don't want to rehash the five options again. I mean, those, some of those were, some of those weren't, yeah, fully done out.
And the last thing was, great work. I saw, I got a copy of an email, Commissioner Rego is now taking the ball and is going to start the conversation about making Saratoga Street up to the heights, working with the state police and the Boston police and Winter police to sort that. So great step, just.
Thank you, yeah. Great help on that.
I'm sure you acknowledge that.
Vice President, Patrick.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. For the National Grid pilot, if people were to, and it may be too early to ask this, but if people were to take part, would that coincide with the good energy thing where they're getting electricity at a lower rate? Do you know?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they, whatever they choose to buy their electricity from.
So it wouldn't preclude them?
No, 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 yeah.
And another question about the Euro Beach meeting. Thank you for hosting that, by the way. That was a meeting.
Yeah.
One of the questions that came up was asking if there were, there was a possibility of more of the moby mats and more staircases. That's just something I've been asked a couple of times since then, if we have any update?
Not yet, we haven't got an answer back on that yet, so, we'll, we'll ask the question for sure.
Thank you. And then, just regarding the timing of signing the administrative consent order, I know I talked to you a little bit about this after the meeting, I wanna make sure we don't miss any of that time where we have a little easier way to do nourishment and stuff. So, have we looked into being able to sign that when we're ready to, to go on the project?
DPD wants to get it rolling on an house, so we're just trying to, you know, hash it out, but we'll sign it when we have to, we don't wanna throw out all the good work we did, just because we're trying to delay the, you know, the signing, we wanna get moving on it, so...
Yeah, thank you. And then, just one final question, for the regional dispatch, that's great that we're able to bring a third community, and hopefully, fingers crossed, but will their staffing and everything scale with the population increase that they're serving?
Absolutely, yeah, they'll be merging, right now, obviously, if it was Chelsea, Chelsea has their own dispatch center that would merge with ours, and, but that's all the intricacies that are being worked out, and we require all the city councils to sign off on it, Revere and Chelsea, so, that's why I said, it's not 100% yet, so we're, but I wanted to at least put on your radar, so it's not a first time you hear it is when they come in to make the presentation. But, that's something that we're, you know, working hard for, and the chiefs should be applauded, they've been, since I got here, they've been working hard to try to get that third community, because it really does allow us to access a lot more funds, you know, be, be a tier-one community, and it's what the state wants, the state's trying to get, you know, these regional dispatch centers, they wanna get it, so they're down to, you know, in a perfect world, you know, 10 or 15 regional dispatch centers throughout the state, right? So, this is the long-term goal, and it's what they've been pushing for a while.
Yeah, from what I've seen, it works really well in other parts of the country that do a lot more regionalization of that stuff, but I just wanted to make sure, given that we have constraints, given mutually constraints and things like that, that we know it'll scale to, so that we're not forgotten.
Yes.
Counselor Manz, thank you. I do have a few points, so I'll try to be as concise and brief as possible, but I wanted to make sure that I was able to get informed, or all of us be informed of the Morton Street sandbag volunteer effort. Are you going to share that via the town blog?
Absolutely, yeah, we'll get it on the town manager's blog, once we have the date locked in and when we're gonna do it, yeah. And we're trying to get volunteers, you know, through the town, and wherever, citizens, volunteers, you know, to try to, you know, many hands light work, right, so...
Yeah, exactly. I'll be there if, if the timing works out, and I, I look forward to helping. Thank you very much on the getting that regional dispatch thing underway, it sounds like you're providing some experience and wisdom that can help us really big time, so thank you for that. I do encourage and implore you to kind of work hard on the hazard mitigation, because that could line us up for a lot of dollars faster. And you don't know when the next mega storm's gonna come, so the sooner that happens, maybe this ATM could, the assistant town manager that you were about to, did you say you offered a offer letter?
We're working on that, we haven't extended, and Person hasn't accepted yet, so I don't wanna put a name on it.
Right, right, no, I don't expect that, I'm just excited about it, and maybe that could be one of their first jobs to kind of move that forward. But, one of the things I wanted to support was, you know, Counselor Swope's suggestion of an audit of variances, and where the parking has really kind of gotten to be out of hand, and places like Summit is a great example, nowhere to park, because these single families have turned to multifamilies, and variances are just given away on a per-case basis, whereas it needs to be more of a master plan. If I, as the chairman of the Capital Asset and Economic Development Committee, need to push that forward, we need not an idea, but a plan to make this not an okay thing to just hand out passes, to buy out parking spaces. It should not be allowed anymore. And the people that have no parking, that are using up all the parking, should somehow pay for that too, because it's not fair that we're all, you know, like, having to like, be forced into small spaces where people just get in a free pass. So, I'm in support of what you're suggesting, and I would love to see a plan put forth that we can all get behind. And in, and then, in that same conversation, you talked about Summit, and that walkway, and possibly giving away a walkway, a public walkway, that, I know that, I mean, those 14 emails you mentioned up are the tip of the iceberg. I know that that adds character, and it's not just about character, it's a, it's a, it's a public access point that is literally what makes us a cool town. I mean, we can walk to places now because of it. So, I would actually suggest two things. One, I love the fact that Steve has already given you some numbers, and I know that as the Capital Asset Plan, we've already got some money set aside for some review of this stuff, I'm not sure if there was anything was applied, I don't believe we put any money towards public walkways in the 2025 plan, did we, Tony?
No, not in the capital plan.
No, so what I'm thinking is, in the short term, we should probably try to, if there's anything hazardous, we should try to block off right away, I don't know if that's something within your wheelhouse, Steve, but that would be something, are there any walkways currently that you deem hazardous?
There's walkways that, that are in need of repair.
Right.
I'm happy to suit the town manager with some of the criteria on what, you know, how you would create a walkway, but I don't really wanna answer that question.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Well, in the meantime, I recommend we do a review of anything that's hazardous we block off, and secondarily, in the next asset plan, we build in some money for some long-term infrastructure, you know, some repairs for the big ones, and for, you know, where there's real money needed. But in the meantime, we can encourage volunteerism on pruning and cleaning up the walkways. I know I've cleaned up some of mine, I know that the people at 76 Summit have done the same, and that does keep our town safer and cleaner, and less conducive to the, you know, like, kind of seedy, shady kind of public walkways where the drugs are supposedly happening. I mean, that's true of any kind of dark space where no one's walking or watching. So, but I encourage volunteerism. So, thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Swope, and I encourage you to push that forward. Secondarily, the short-term lodging, Tony, do you know where that's at? Is that still in the planning board?
Planning board, I had a meeting hearing on it the same night as they had it on the citizens petition. So, they're, they still have it, they haven't made a recommendation yet, but they have it, and they're reviewing it.
Okay, all right, I'm still looking forward to hearing that. The third thing I wanna talk about is the, the format of this meeting. I feel as though it's a perpetual problem, there is no give and take, and it's great that you can give a town manager report, and you're, and you're very good at your job, but there's no ability for these nine voices and all of these voices to have a conversation that, with questions being answered. And I know that, Jim, you're kind enough to answer the questions that are presented at times, but apparently, that's out of line of, according to council rules and charter rules. So, my question to the town manager, possibly to Cipolletta and to you, Jim, is when is the time for the next charter change or charter review? Isn't it every five years?
We'll be naming a committee in late January.
Late January, okay, so 2025 is the next time. So, that would be something I would love to see added to the possible review.
Just keep in mind, that's a, it's the open meeting law that drives that, it's not, you know, it's the, you know, you're not supposed to discuss anything that's not on the agenda, that's, that's public meeting, open meeting law. So, your citizen's query, or public comment, whatever you wanna call it, is meant in the beginning for citizens to bring out ideas, or bring out thoughts that they have and things, and then the council chooses to put them on the next agenda and get back to that person. So, there is a process for that, and it's not meant to be a give and take at every meeting, because then people don't know if they wanna show up or not, they don't wanna, you know, there may be some discuss that they wanna talk about, but because it's not on the agenda, they don't show up, and then they miss it. So, that's why it's intended to be that way.
But nonetheless, questions aren't being answered, and facts are, and misinformation is being spread, because we're not able to answer the questions on point at the time, and so as a result, we're getting watercooler knowledge. And it's basically misinformation is spreading like crazy, and it just, it's, I hate to see the struggle that's happening between the town. We're having problem after problem, to be quite honest with you, the no to 3A crowd is going to get what they want, if they just realize that we're actually all in favor of a referendum. We're in favor of a referendum, we just need a plan proposed, so that there's something that can be voted upon, the town council can vote upon it, and then a referendum can be had. So, that's my, my, and the last thing I wanted to bring up, last, is to, to, the fact that the planning board, who has put themselves out there, and made these comments, and, and taken our charge to go ahead and give us a plan, and to have their character and their integrity challenged and disparaged, is embarrassing and, and deplorable. It's not fair to them, they're putting themselves out there, they're putting, they're giving their personal time, and they're not getting paid for any of this, they're not getting paid, they're not looking, they, they're architects for places all over the, the regional area, you think that they're gonna get paid for jobs in, in Winthrop? It's deplorable, and I, and I, I think that their character needs to be defended, and I just did. And the last thing I wanna bring up is the most important thing, and that's the school override, and that's coming right up. And I don't want this to be kind of a tucked under the rug kind of thing, and then the people that care the most are the only people that are voting yes. Everyone needs to realize, this affects everyone. So, just because you don't have kids in the school system anymore, doesn't mean it doesn't affect you. Your value of your home will go down proportionally with the region as our school systems go down the tubes. You can't have 33 kids in a classroom and expect anyone to learn anything. So, that's my final thought, and I hope you, I hope it helps.
Counselor Costigan.
Yes, I, I just wanna thank DPW Director Calla for the McGee's corner fix, thank you. I know it's not perfect, but it, it does the job, thank you very much. I was out last meeting to thank you, but then I was, you know, remiss last meeting to, you know, talking about other issues, but thank you very much for making that happen. Town manager, the Morton Street flooding, as Counselor DeRoz mentioned, we had a meeting last night, along with this Counselor Ilo was present as well. I know we talk about Morton Street as being the priority for flood mitigation. The discussion that did come up last night, at least I brought it up, was the fact that, you know, just several meetings ago, we had half this room, if not three quarters of this room, filled with Morton Street residences, it relates to flooding. And there's certain councilors in this room who are getting badgered, rightly so, by their constituents, as it relates to continuous flooding. The, the issue I mentioned last night is that we are in a moderate drought situation. Mother Nature corrects itself. I would be preparing for several massive noristas. Once that starts, it's not gonna stop. I did mention last meeting, just in passing, and I mentioned it last night, and Counselor DeRoz and I spoke about it, and it's to be debated, but mitigation, short-term mitigation down in Morton. I mentioned the Aqua Dam system. If anyone's looked at that, that was a key to protecting a lot of homes during the flooding down south. It's been proven to work, it's fairly inexpensive, I think at least the Morton Street people at least deserve some type of entertaining of that type of system. And again, it's a bladder system side by side, you can look it up on YouTube, aquadam.com, it's quite impressive. I know that there are some, you know, some cynics of that, as it relates to money and the cost to this town. The cost to this town, I mean, as it relates to Morton Street, is gonna be ongoing, we will spend far more in, in trying to, to mitigate that as the storms approach. The main cause of flooding down on Morton Street is tidal surge. I know we do have rainwater issues, but maybe two inches of rain, three inches of rain, a pumping mechanism on the opposite side of this Aqua Dam by our DPW group, the installation of this Aqua Dam by our fire department, very, very easy, if anyone's ever looked at the instructional videos. I'm gonna leave it at that. As far as Counselor Swope is concerned, I am wholeheartedly, and will second her motion, to a planning, zoning, DPW ordinance coalition, to address all of the issues as a whole, so we're all on the same damn page. This, this one back and forth, and all of these split decisions by all these people, and there's somebody in the audience talking about, well, what about this, or what about that? We, the council, have got to get on the damn same page here as a town. These, these constituents of ours and the town residents are spinning their heads, I'm sorry. I can't imagine the amount of questions I get regarding issues, and guess what, I don't even know what the hell I'm talking about, because I haven't been informed of them. So, I think the committees have to be forthcoming, don't get me wrong, we have a session here during every committee, but you can remember, there's, you know, every two weeks, I mean, things change fast, and, you know, we're just touching the surface. There's a lot that happens behind the scenes in this town as well, we're talking about Summit. I mean, I know Counselor Swope has gone out there several times, I've talked to people on Summit as well, I know a couple of friends there. So, again, let's get the facts, and let's, let's not let certain people control the narrative here. Counsel, I should say, town manager, as it relates to zoning, in looking at that, and I know it's attached to 3A, so don't anybody gasp here, the zoning on the CBD, very concerning to me, I'm not gonna discuss it right now, but it relates to the responsible development through vehicle limitation in this town, which was pertinent for many, many years. The, the comfortable, responsible development in town as it relates to limited vehicles, as it relates to the ability to build a monstrosity. My understanding is with this new CBD proposal, I think it's a mixed-use structure that is required to provide parking spaces, make payments to the town in lieu of providing for all or part of the onsite required parking. Payments made to the town in lieu of 50% of onsite parking spaces for the project and the center business. I'm very curious as to where all these extra cars are gonna be going. Just let me continue as well, and then let alone the, the residential four-story buildings that will encompass every inlet to that center business district. What type of, of residency are we talking here? Are we talking about a co-living environment, where you can rent the rooms, two per person, and one each car for three units? Are we talking a, an Airbnb on steroids? These are questions that have to be asked, and they have to be addressed by all Winthrop residents. We're not gonna have a center business district in fires, I'm concerned. I'm not even gonna talk about the requirement of businesses underneath each floor or building as it relates to whether it's the sweats, which, by the way, I believe has, has been sold, at least the business, there were movements about right now in that center business district that are very concerning to me as a Winthrop resident. Again, I am dedicated to this town, I said it from day one, and I think everybody else in this room, including this council, should be very, very aware of the people in this town. And I'll, I'll just go into, I'm not gonna, I'm not actually gonna ask you two more questions, I'm just gonna resort to the Conservation Law Foundation, did a study in Dorchester in the urban area of Boston, as it relates to participation by its people, its residents. And they, they were not, and not asked to participate in developments in the inner city of Boston. It's a known fact, and studies have been done, that the mental health and well-being of a community, and we're talking physically and mentally, is affected by anybody who is not included with the decision-making for their own life well-being, let alone the quality of life in this town is at risk here. This is a serious issue, and we get people talking about $16,000 per year, as if it's gonna break the bank in this town. That is just totally, totally false. What is, what are the people worth in this town? That's my question. So, again, we as a whole, as a whole town itself, should come together, this, this division and this vitriol in regards to some of the emails I'm getting, and some of the other sides getting them as well, this is a very sensitive issue for everybody here in town. We are all living in Winthrop, some of us for quite a long time, and some of us who have just gotten here. So, again, I am a Winthrop through and through, as I say all the time, my bloodline is here in Winthrop. I care a lot about this town, and to just, if my case, you know I'm no against 3A, to give this town away for the basic cash that the state may or may not give us, which by the way, is illegal, we're talking grant money, we're talking four grants, three grants, I don't know, it'll be 10 next week. But, again, do we lay down and accept the money while they steamroll us in this town? That's my question. That's my question. So, yes, I am upset, very upset about 3A, the division of this town, I have friends who are, again, most of them saying no to 3A, but there are those who say, oh my God, what about the money for this town, the schools, the schools? I get news for you, there's a lot of people who are very, very discouraged by this town council, by, by the actions of this town, in not having a vote in this town. We have the override coming up for the schools, which I am totally for. My three daughters went through this school system, when they were given the MWA mitigation money to the general fund. They weren't funding it, we were on the, on the edge of loss of accreditation here. My daughters went through that time period, one daughter in particular who needed services, town would not, would not step up. So, am I a little bit of there? Eh, maybe a little bit. But, at the same time, we have this vote coming up for the override, I encourage everybody, everybody to vote yes for the schools, and to many councilors here, Mr. Munson, Councilor Munson as well, very important, a town is judged on how it treats its children, and how it funds its schools as well, to keep good teachers here, and good pupils, and learning, so forth, so on. As far as the fire station's concerned, $36 million, again, you're asking people to, to vote for the override, these are maybe people who don't feel like they are now connected to the town because of this 3A issue. And actually, it's the state we have to blame, it's not anybody in this room, it's not anybody on the council. The state, Governor Baker, no for affordability, passed in 2021, and now it's coming home to roost. And here we are, a divided community with, again, a lot of problems, but as John Lennon said it best, there aren't any problems, there's only solutions. So, I rest my case, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Amen.
We're fortunate enough to have the DPW director here, and I know councillor Costigan has brought it up a couple of times. Do you have any knowledge or can you tell us anything about the Aqua?
Sure. Look, as it relates to Morton Street, Morton Street, you get three issues down there that are affecting Morton Street. You do have the storm surge, which is the overflow, you know. You have a capacity issue in your drainage system there, and you have six unprotected outfall pipes. So you get tidal influence. I have one, a fourth one, you have a very old system down there, drainage system, so you have groundwater infiltration into your pipe network as well, which is also reducing your capacity. To resolve the problem, you need all three components fixed. So yes, you need an earthen berm or what Mr. Costigan brought up, the Aqua Dam that stops potentially the overflow. However, the Aqua Dam down there, if you went that route, it's 3,500 feet of coastline that you have to protect. You could put an Aqua Dam around each of those eight, six or eight houses over there. It's only protecting those houses. You have houses across the street that still get affected with the overflow, and you have houses, you know, the first houses up, some of those finger streets going up to Main Street, get affected. If you put an Aqua Dam out there or an earthen berm out there and you don't do your backflow protection, the tidal surge is coming underneath your dam. So you've got to resolve that issue. On the high, heavy precipitation or even low precipitation, long duration, your capacity, you don't have the capacity of the pipe work, so you still get flooding there. So you've got to, you've got to resolve all three issues. I mean, really, that's to summarize your issues there. The Aqua Dam, again, put it out for the 3,500 feet of the coastline there, or you wrap an Aqua Dam around every house, I don't think that's the solution. I don't think sandbags are the solution. I think all three need to be resolved. What you know about the Aqua Dam is if it was, it was successful down south to protect an asset, you know, it's, but it's not really meant to be reused 10, 20 times. It's prone to rupture by moving it. You know, it's, to put around an asset for a major event, and yeah, it will protect, it will help protect that asset. Putting it up and taking it down, I don't know that that's feasible or sustainable. But certainly, if you're not going to resolve the other two issues, it's coming right up and under anyways. So that's my feeling on the matter.
And it's good to know we have a bid on the engineering, and hopefully, I'm sure this council will support getting the funds it's needed to hire the engineer and to move this process forward. And it might be two of the three things we get right away or try to get, and the berm is still going to be an issue at some point.
Mr. Consul, if I could elaborate a little bit on that too. The earth berm we talked about that was designed by the Woods Hole Group with Mystic Valley, the storm water is a big piece of that. The earth berm, like Steve said, is just one piece. The storm water upgrades that Steve's talking about, stopping the tidal surge from coming back in, storage tanks that have to go in, that's all part and parcel of that, you know, 17, 18 million dollar number. Like, that's a big piece of that. The earth berm, you know, relatively easy to put in, right? But it's the rest of it and the storm water upgrades that have to happen, and those have to happen first before, you know, like Steve said, otherwise the water just comes down to the street and then you end up making it worse because you're trapping it there.
CDICR?
I don't think they've met since our last meeting. You know, there's some discussions, emails back and forth about, I think you're dealing with it later, about appointees, but no official meeting since the last meeting.
Policymaking committees have not met. Old business, town council vote to transfer $400. Move the town council vote to transfer $400 from town council reserve line, current balance $40,000 to the library materials line to increase the library overall budget for fiscal '25 and bring the library into compliance with state minimum requirements for their budget or take any other action relative there too. We brought this up at the last meeting. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Vice President Belcher. There's a second by councillor Swope to put it on the table. We did bring this up at the last meeting. It seems like, wow, it's such a small amount, but it's an amount to make them in compliance, which makes them eligible to serve the state grants. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Going back, I'll bring it to councillor De Ross from finance. There was a motion to increase the borrowing that was authorized back in June 21st, 2022, from 1,633,750 up to 2,194,250. Councillor De Ross, do you have that motion?
I do. The motion is from the town manager, October 10th. It reads as follows, the order, that the order the town council passed on June 21st, 2022, authorizing a borrowing amount in the amount of $1,633,750 for the PRV station, PRV standing for pressure regulating valve. Project is hereby amended to increase the authorized borrowing amount for the project to 2,194,250, which amended order shall as follow read in its entirety, order that the town appropriates the sum of $2,194,250 to pay costs of reconstructing and making extraordinary repairs to the Revere Street Pressure Regulating Valve Station, including the replacement of equipment at the station and all other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is approved to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44 and Chapter 29(c) or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. That the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Mass General Laws 29(c). And in connection therewith, the treasurer is authorized to enter into a loan agreement with the trust, and the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, and that the town manager is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. And I'll just add the note that I had said earlier in the meeting that in our finance committee meeting earlier tonight, we had Sarah Johnson and Robbie Powers joining us as well as Director Calla, and we did get the good news that we did receive, there was an additional $475,843 in ARCA funds that were received that can help to offset our borrowing debt obligation. So net-net, at the end of the day, this would increase our borrowing by $560,500, but at the time of the loan closure, it will be offset by that $475,843 amount. So net-net, at the end of the day, this increases our borrowing by $84,657, and we made a positive recommendation off the committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councillor Tassaneri. Councillor Costigan?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councillor Swope?
Yes.
Councillor De Ross?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Luttrell?
Yes. Motion passes. The release and abandonment of certain rights of way on Summit Ave, as we discussed, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
As we discussed early in the meeting a couple of times, has been moved to December And the last old business is a petition. A petition, this motion's coming from Chris Boyce, Chair of the Planning Board. There was a motion that the Winthrop Town Planning Board, the Winthrop Planning Board, upon the petition of the Winthrop Says No to 3A Committee, recommend to the town council to amend Town of Winthrop Zoning Ordinance, Section 17, by adding proposed Section 17. dot o4, dot o6, zero, which reads, one, any plan to consider and/or voted upon in order to comply with General Law, Chapter 40(a), Section 3(a) and/or associated guidelines of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as currently in effect or as amended, shall be voted upon by the registered voters in the Town of Winthrop by ballot question and not by the Winthrop Council. Two, any final approval of approved changes to the Winthrop zoning laws or district in order to comply with General Law, Chapter 40(a), Section 3(a) shall be a ballot question upon, voted upon by the registered voters of the Town of Winthrop. A yes vote by the planning board would signify that they recommend that the town council accepts the petition, and no vote signifies that the planning board shall recommend that the town council reject the petition. It was voted four to zero to reject the motion. So the motion before us is to, motion by the planning board is that we reject the petition. So there's a motion to reject the petition. Now, it's coming, it's not coming out of committee, it's coming out of a board. Does it require a second? I will ask the town manager.
Somebody needs to make a motion to accept or deny the planning board's recommendation.
There's a motion to deny, to accept the planning board's recommendation, which would deny the petition. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by councillor De Ross. Further discussion on the motion, Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that a yes vote, when we take a vote on this, would be to accept the rejection by the planning board.
Correct.
So a yes vote rejects the petition.
Well, a yes vote accepts the planning board's recommendation.
Right.
In other words, the flip of what you might have thought coming in.
Yeah, so. I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page.
Okay, so a no vote says that?
A no vote agrees with the petition, the petitioner, the original petitioner.
Councillor Munson?
Everyone clear on?
If we were to, if it were to get voted down today by saying yes to the planning board's recommendation to reject, then, and we wanted to vote on the said plan as a town council, but then offer a referendum, would it be, what would be the process, technically speaking, to actually create a referendum for that, the 3A plan proposed by the planning board that we voted upon?
Well, we don't have a plan yet. The petitioner in this case, if we vote yes, which would reject the petition, the petitioner or anyone has a right to produce, to put in a supplemental petition, basically the same thing, which again, would be, need the required signatures. If that comes before the council as a supplemental petition, we then automatically put the question of this to a vote within, again, no earlier than 30 days, no later than 90 days, unless we have another item on a ballot, then we can extend it to 120 days. And again, that question would be whether the council votes, whether the community votes on any future dealings with 3A, regarding 3A.
They'd be voting on the zoning change.
They'd be voting on the zoning change, right. Which then would have to go back to the state to be adopted. Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate while we're talking about this, that I do fully intend to present a question or a motion to move that the planning board's recommendation, when they are ready to present it to us, does go to a ballot. So whatever happens with this petition does not mean that there is no way that the voters are going to have a chance to say what they want to say about 3A and the plan.
Well, the voters always have a chance to say what they say about 3A.
I just want to.
Councillor Swope?
Okay, let me ask you a question about what you just said. Are you saying that instead of the town voting on the petition, that you are going to make a recommendation that it go to a referendum of the voters?
I think we need to be careful about the word. So a referendum vote would be started by the people in response to a vote that we have taken, right?
Oh, so you are still recommending that the town council vote on the planning board's recommendation?
No. What I want is the citizens to vote on the planning board.
Discussion now should be limited to the petition.
Just limited to the citizen petition in front of you.
Well, then that ends our discussion.
Indeed.
Any further discussion on the planning board's recommendation on this petition?
Just to clarify, if the vice president could, again, your first comment regarding the vote yes or no, what does it actually mean in reference to it?
A yes vote right now would agree with the planning board's recommendation to reject the petition. A no vote would be to approve the petition. You vote yes, you reject the petition. If you vote no, you approve the petition. Any other discussion? And just for clarification, this regards to zoning, this needs six to pass.
Two thirds.
Yeah, it needs two thirds. So you would need six no votes to pass this, okay? Because the zoning law requires two-thirds votes of the entire council. So regardless if there's seven or nine or six, you would need six, in this case, no votes to approve this petition. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councillor Tassaneri. Councillor Costigan?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco?
Councillor Ayello?
Yes.
Councillor Swope?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
A no vote agrees with the petitioner, a yes vote agrees with the planning board, basically. A yes vote rejects the petition and no vote approves the petition.
No.
Yes.
Well, oh, I don't think you were called yet.
Councillor De Ross?
Wait your turn.
May I speak now? Councillor De Ross?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Luttrell?
Yes. The planning board's rejection is upheld by the council. Now that I lost my spot. We're still doing this. New business. All right. I just don't want to make sure that doesn't get overlooked. We had some music to play while I'm looking for.
Oh, yes.
Old beans.
Hold it.
All right, and new business. We have two items. One was appointments, which will be postponed. I had appointments ready, but I'm going to wait until next meeting, November 19th, to add appointments to that. The other item under new business was a proclamation that October be Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I would like to read this proclamation. "In the Town of Winthrop, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, HAB COV and other domestic violence and victim service providers, I urge all people in the community to actively work towards the elimination of intimate partner violence and be part of the community solution to end domestic violence. Whereas in just one day across the U.S. and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than 9,000 requests for services, including those for emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be met because programs lack the resources to meet victims' needs. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole and throughout the community. Whereas the need for safe housing remains survivor's most urgent need. Whereas Winthrop joins with others across Massachusetts and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide, who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Winthrop. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each of whose voice, individual action add a valuable and powerful component to the transforming our communities. Resolve the Town of Winthrop, through its Town Council and Town Manager's office, does hereby recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Therefore encouraging its businesses, community-based nonprofits, organizations, neighbors, and all, to join effort locally and nationally to address domestic violence in all forms. Resolve to be a part of the community solution to end domestic violence in the community. Town of Winthrop, through its Town Council and Town Administration, does hereby embrace an effort to end domestic violence by providing resources and support for domestic violence survivors by involving entire communities and recognizing, addressing, and working to prevent domestic violence in one of the surest ways of eliminating it. To be optimally effective, community networks must integrate members of all sectors of the community, families, businesses, advocacy groups, civil society, public service such as police, firefighters, and medical... as police, firefighters, and medical examiners, social services such as welfare, unemployment, public housing and health, education, the media, and officials from nation, national, state, and local governments. The Town of Winthrop again makes this commitment to provide support and resources to HABUS COV and all domestic violence survivors, therefore, I, James Littieri, Town Council President of the Town of Winthrop, hereby do proclaim October twenty twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So claimed. Public comment, round two.
Oh, didn't we miss something on new business?
No.
Appointments?
I said that before the, I said that I was putting off the appointments until the next meeting.
Oh.
Public comment number two. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Jack Dowd, precinct one. Couple of issues, different issues, some committee issues. We haven't heard from the Intergovernmental Strategic Committee in months, and wondering where that very important committee stands as far as making a report to the town council. I'm looking forward to having that necessary. Another issue which was talked about tonight, I know at least three easements, two of them are under public walkways, and uses for wastewater or sewage pipe. And there's another one that doesn't have a walkway, so to speak, but goes on the public land, takes a certain place on the return. It also includes sewers. So before anything is done with any type of improvement or identification, I'd like these sewage problems to be identified before anything is done. Also, as far as the sale of land that the town has done in the past, there were three walkthroughs down the beach area from side street to side street that were sold about twenty years ago. So each, each, so it involved four houses, and on a corner of a walkway, on a corner of a walkway, so four different houses. And they were, and these parcels were sold to the abuddies of the, only the abuddies could buy them, of these walkways, so they were sold for a price, and it wasn't a very big price. The other thing I want to talk about is some Munson mentioned. Not only because of this, to tell you the truth, we don't give away town property, when in fact, we did give away town property. There was a parcel, and there was a walkthrough from the top of Court Road down to the water. The man purchased the price, and he couldn't complete the purchase because the deed said that there was a walkway from sidewalk on Court Road down to the water, which there is, you know, at one sixty Court Road also, and other places, you know, further down Court Road, you can walk from the sidewalk to the ocean edge. Mr. Munson stated that we don't give away town property, when in fact, Mr. Munson signed in the vote that, and the only one that didn't want to give this property away on Court Road was Councilor Richard Farino. Mr. Munson voted yes to give the property away, so for him to come off his high horse and admit that he did vote to give away town property, and I don't want a discussion there, I don't want to clarify, I don't want to clarify, Mr. Munson voted to give the property away, and he says he did not vote that way. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Lee Foley, precinct six. I just want to go back to a comment that was made by...
He's out of order.
He made, he made his statement to Lee.
You're going to let this happen?
He's the one that started it right there.
Okay. I just wanted to, just make a comment about the comments that the council just made of divisiveness in the town and the debate that's going on, and just to hear being verbalized out loud that the opinion of someone who lived in this town for a long time is more valuable and important because their blood is here than someone who is new to town, to me is incredibly divisive.
Never said that.
Can you stop this is public comment?
You said that, and you were making intimidating, I found it intimidating, and I just want to say if we're, if we want to move forward and be inclusive and welcoming of people, this is the kind of thing that we're fighting against. Somebody who arrived here last week has just as valuable a pen as somebody like my family who's been here for a hundred years plus. So I think that's just the attitude of, you know, not welcoming newcomers and new ideas, and I just want to end with a quote from David Bowie, since we're quoting musicians, tomorrow belongs to those who can see it coming. And sometimes I feel like we don't see the future, we're looking back in the past and trying to grasp that, and it's never coming back, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Just do you think, number one, Carl, on the house, precinct six? I apologize, I always forget.
No, no, no.
Number one, happy we were, you guys proposed to pass the domestic violence awareness month. I got in a conversation with former chief Delahandie, met many years ago, about, you know, he always found that drastic violence was an unfortunately common thing that he was responding to in Winthrop, and so that's maybe something to think about, is that it's unfortunately common here. Number two, about the walkways, I'm really supportive of public walkways. I grew up with a walkway, public walkway behind myself, my house, and my mom's currently trying to fight the city of Cambridge because they're trying to turn the walkway into a dedicated truck route. So imagine having, one of my favorite walkways, the one that goes right by the, the football field, I use it every time I want to get groceries, I walk over there, and I love that one, I think it's great. Imagine turning that into a dedicated road for truck, for eighteen-wheelers. I don't understand why they're trying to do it, but that's what they're trying to do, we got to preserve our public walkways, it would be a shame to lose any of them. I'm not exactly a hundred percent on blocking the ones off that they're unsafe, if they are truly unsafe and somebody might tumble down, yes, but I feel like sometimes like if we blocked it off, maybe that'll encourage the property owner to just take it, so I think, but otherwise, very supportive of public walkways, we need to keep them, something that makes Winthrop unique and elegant.
Yes, Mr. Anzian.
My comments have to do with the concerns that...
Again, Mr. Anzian, just name in precinct.
...one forty tasks out of precinct three, I'm sorry, I forgot, my man is. Mr. Munson and Ms. Swob have concerns with the Board of Appeals, and I want to tell them that the problem with Board of Appeals is the Board of Appeals doesn't follow the law. The law is very clear, is that variance is only supposed to be given out variance sparingly, they're not supposed to be giving out easily, and there's three criteria that have to be met, three elements, that all three of them have to be met. The main one is, there has to be a hardship, and it has to be a hardship that either relates to the land or the structure, not to the tenant, not to the landowner, and it has to be unique to that particular piece of land. So to give you an example, if a person had a piece of property with a big boulder on it, and he couldn't comply with the setback, that would be a hardship that relates to the property, and a variance would be proper. On the other hand, if the whole area is like, oh, sandy soil, so you couldn't build on it, and somebody had some kind of plan that was against the code, but allowing them to build because of sandy soil, no, because it's the whole area, it's not unique to you, they don't care. Unless they get a big public protest with people that they care about, then they'll follow the law, but they don't care. Particularly if nobody goes in to show up, nobody shows up and protests, the variance is automatically granted, which is not supposed to be. The position is supposed to come up with the proof on those three elements. Now, I don't know if the town manager or somebody can lean on them, I did, Mr. Marino did come to my aid because they weren't even following the rules of procedure. They had rules of procedure, you were supposed to be able to go to the clerk and get the rules of procedure. When I went, they made fun of me, hit, I'm the town manager, like I'm some kind of crank. They gave me back the actual provisions of the town bylaws that say you can go to the town clerk and get the, get this particular rules of procedure, they made me go to the Secretary of State to appeal, and even then, they kind of insulted me in front of the Secretary of State, like, well, we gave him this, we gave him what he's asking for, he's not happy. They didn't give me what I wanted, but anyways, that's an old different story, that's the clerk, that wasn't the clerk and the attorney that was here tonight, that wasn't the appeals board, but again, the appeals board doesn't follow the law, and that's what you want to do, is make them follow. If you make them follow, the statute, the general laws, and the, the town bylaw says it's supposed to follow the general law, and they'll be all set, you want any problem. How you can do that, I don't know, I don't know how much power the town council has over the Board of Appeals to tell them, you have to do this, you have to do that, or you're just like us, you don't want, you have to appeal them, and to appeal them, you have to have standing, because my next door neighbor, who was a board member, they gave them the variance they didn't deserve, there was actually no basis, there were no legal bases to give it to them. When I went to appeal, they made me prove, and the town council was a representative, he was the town council, the lawyer here, Jim, he made me prove that I was going to be hurt. Cost me thirty thousand dollars to prove I was going to be hurt, I had to hire an expert witness, once we got our proof that I was going to be hurt, there was no case, so, well, we dismiss it, get them, we won't go forward. That's the problem with the Board of Appeals, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Paul Vast, in precinct three. I have a lot of thoughts on a lot of things that we discussed tonight, and I, as you know, I've written to you on the set all of them, and I will continue to do so, but I want to go on really clear, my agreement with Lee just said, not specifically this particular council member, who I heard say pretty much the exact same thing she heard him say, but the overall tone of this town in the sense that somehow age in this town gives you some understanding that somebody else doesn't have, and that's got to be a ratio in this town.
Thank you.
I have family in this town, I have family in the Boston area going back to almost the Mayflower, maybe not in this town, but in this, and I don't feel I have any particular right to say anything more than anybody else does who lives around here than, than anybody else.
Thank you. Karen.
Karen Travis, precinct two. I'm going to go in the other direction. As far as parking in the town is concerned, I think you've heard me say this more than once, we had a building inspector in this town many years ago who left to go to another city to assume the same position. The city that he went to, in order for you to change a two-family to a three-family, or to build a complex, you had to provide parking on your property. And the way they got around that was, if you did not, those people that moved in there did not get a parking permit for the street. And I've asked several times for somebody to look into this, because I don't think that that would be difficult to pass. I have been to many meetings, many zoning board meetings, where the parking has become an issue, and complained, and asked the people to mandate this order. I don't think, I own a two-family house, with my daughter on the first floor right now, but I did have a tenant, and when I had a tenant down there, the three years that she was there, she was allowed a parking space. That was only courtesy to my neighbors. Mr. Littieri owns a two-family house, and I think as courtesy, he has his tenant now parking in his driveway, and I'm sure there are other people that have done the same thing. I think this needs to be looked at closely. If you're going to take your house, a single, and make it a two-family, or rather, two-family, make it a three-family, you provide the place for those people to park, not the Town of Winthrop.
I agree, I agree with it. Yes, sorry.
Tastywood House, precinct six. So there have been a lot of things said tonight, but I, I think my biggest ask is that you all have big decisions to make on so many different things, and I appreciate the service that you give to our community. It is a huge commitment to be here at every meeting. I beg you to be informed. You can hear people's concerns, you can take those in. Their concerns are valid because they're coming from a place of genuine emotion, but your job as council members is to take a step back from the emotion that people are throwing at you, and look at the facts, the actual information, and make informed decisions because it will impact our town for a long time to come, all of the things that you decide. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public...
I wanted to say, just one...
No, not really, thank you. Public relations we have, I, I do want to, again, I'll talk a little bit about the, the election, but I do want to do a little shout out or thank you. First, I will say, one thing I, we can guarantee is none of the public ways will have eighteen-wheel access. But I will, you know, we want to shout out, and the town clerk is at the top of this list, and her staff, for the job they're doing already. I mean, the election isn't until Tuesday. Also, Karen Travis is just an amazing person, and you do so much for this town, and thank you for your work you're doing on the election. Katie Quist, Mary Lou Cooney, Mary Ellen Keough, Don Kearney, Dave Masochelli, Jane Riley Leonard, Stephen Strangie, and Ina Silverstein, Silverstein, and Ron Spinney. The work is amazing. Just to put it into context a little bit, we had a town election last year, we had about three thousand votes. So far, I mean, the election's Tuesday, so far, we've had over forty-five-hundred votes, either in person or by mail.
Yes.
Over eleven-hundred in-person votes. So we, we have roughly...
And also put into the machines, so they can just keep going to the machine on election, yeah.
Yeah. Five votes in the chamber. That's a carry.
No, it's amazing, and those ballots have to be placed in the, in the, in the machines on Tuesday during Election Day with all the craziness that's going on there. But, you know, we've had fifty percent more votes before the election than we had in a town election, which is obvious, but we have roughly fourteen and a half thousand registered voters in town. We're looking at probably somewhere around ten or ten thousand plus votes in this election. We will probably have close to fifty percent of that prior to Election Day. You know, we're a small town, there is not a lot of help, but the volunteers, not necessarily volunteers, but basically volunteers and staff do an amazing job, and, and we will more than likely have results by eight oh five, or, you know, and that's expected, right? Just like the rest of the country. But thank you to Denise, your staff, and thank you to the amazing people that are helping out. We do have early voting continuing through October thirty-first.
Thursday.
Through Thursday, and that will be during town hall office hours, except for Thursday, Halloween, it will cut off at four-thirty. And again, state election is November fifth. Precincts one, two, five, and six will vote at the Old Middle School, which is on, Parleen Street, forty-five Parleen Street, forty-five Parleen Street, one, two, three, five, and six. And precinct four will vote on Golden Drive, at, Golden Drive. So they will vote at Golden Drive. Again, voting will be from seven AM to eight PM. I encourage everybody, no matter who you vote for, to get out and vote, it's your right, it's your obligation, it's your duty, that's what gives you the right, really, to come here and, and bitch and moan and do everything you do, because that's what we need, right? It's not a, we've talked about it before, it is absolutely a hundred percent not a perfect system. We don't have the perfect childhood, we do the best we can with what we have. We all, we disagree on a lot of stuff, but I think primarily we are a hundred percent in commitment of moving Winthrop forward, and, and everybody should respect that. Every councilor has that same thought. We might not agree the means to the end, but we agree that in the end, we want Winthrop to be a better place, more welcoming place, more inviting, more affordable. So we thank you all for your help, because it would be much quicker meetings, but maybe not as productive, so thank you all for that. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Councilor Ayello, any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. All those know, motion to adjourn, thank you.